Order the September 2nd, 2020, regular meeting of the James City County Planning Commission. Mr. Holt, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Knoll.
Present.
Ms. Knoll represents the Stonehouse District. Mr. Rose. Mr. Rose represents the Roberts District. Ms. Leverens.
Here.
Ms. Leverens is an at-large member and is this year's vice chair. Mr. Pollster.
Here.
Mr. Pollster represents the Jamestown District. Mr. Haldeman.
Here.
Mr. Haldeman represents the Berkeley District. Mr. O'Connor.
Present.
Mr. O'Connor is an at-large member. Mr. Croft.
Here.
Mr. Croft represents the Palatan District and is this year's chair. I'm Paul Holt, Director of Community Development and Planning for the county. And sitting to my virtual left is not Max Alaven. He was on vacation this week. We're joined this evening, commission members by Adam Kinsman, our county attorney, and first time by Liz Parment, our Assistant County Attorney. Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you, and welcome to both Liz and Adam. And it's encouraging that Adam chose to come back to his roots for a meeting. So that's very nice to hear you, Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Everybody has in their packet a resolution that will allow us to conduct this meeting virtually. The summary of that resolution is that on April 14th, 2020, the board readopted the continuity of government ordinance, which, under certain circumstances, permits this commission to conduct today's meeting by electronic or telephonic means without a quorum of members physically present. May I have a motion for adoption of that resolution for tonight's meeting?
Move to adopt, Barbara.
Thank you, Barbara. Mr. Holt, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Knoll.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Mr. Pollster.
Aye.
Mr. Haldeman.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Leverens.
Aye.
And Mr. Croft.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the public comment period. This is for topics not subject to any of the public hearings tonight. I'll open the public comment period and ask Mr. Holt if there were any citizens who registered to speak.
Not for general comment, just for public hearings this evening.
Okay, thank you. I'll then close the public comment period, and we'll move to reports of the commission. Mr. Haldeman from the Development Review Committee, did you have anything to report this evening?
No, Mr. Chairman, the Development Review Committee did not meet.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pollster, anything from policy?
Nothing to report. The Policy Committee did not meet.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Pollster. We now move to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are deemed to be non-controversial. However, Planning Commissioner can pull any item for further discussion. There's one consent agenda item this evening. That's the minutes from our August 5th, 2020, regular meeting. Would a commissioner like to hold that, or may I have a motion to approve?
This is Julie, move approval of the minutes of August 5th.
Thank you, Ms. Leverens. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, thank you. We now move to the public hearings. First item is AFD-05-86-2-2018, Barn Swamp AFD Edition. Ms. Haynes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Mr. Jonathan Kenny has applied to enroll 196 acres located at 10039 Old Sage Road into the Barn Swamp AFD. The parcel is currently undeveloped and forested, and with the exception of a telecom tower located at the northwestern end of the property. A forest management plan has been prepared for the owner, and the Virginia Department of Forestry has noted that the soils were well-suited for the cultivation of trees. At its July 23rd meeting, the AFD Advisory Committee voted 6-0 to recommend approval of the application. Staff finds that the proposed addition meets all state and local requirements for inclusion in the Barn Swamp AFD. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the application to the Board of Supervisors. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I believe I did see the applicant sign in. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Any questions for staff at this point? All right. Then ask the commission if there's any disclosures, meeting with applicants or applicants' attorneys or anything like that? Any disclosures? Okay. I will now open the public hearing. And Ms. Haynes, you said Mr. Kenny is present, and he's not required to make a statement, but if he would like to do so, he is more than welcome to.
Thank you. I'm not sure that you can hear me, however, because it says the video is stopped because the host has stopped it.
No, we can hear you, Mr. Kenny.
Okay, fine. I just can't see me.
Right.
No, I don't have anything particular to add.
Okay. Thank you for calling in, at any rate. Any questions for the applicant from the Planning Commission? Okay. Mr. Holt, were there any speaker cards?
No, sir, not for this item.
Okay. In that case, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to the commission for discussion or a motion. Anyone? Mr. Chairman, Haldeman moves approval, or moves that we recommend approval, for JCC AFD-05-086-2-2018, Barn Swamp AFD Edition. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I did raise my hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Frank.
I just wanted to make two comments. Is number one, I was, once again, very happy to see that, associated with this application, was an assessment of the property in terms of the forestry assessment, the trees, how it could be harvested, when, the type, and all that. That was very helpful. The second thing is, it's 196 acres just outside of the PSA. I was happy to see that we're going to put it at least in a temporary conservation easement for the next five years. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? And my omission, I did not see the hand icon, Frank, until after you mentioned that.
By the way, I'll second Mr. Haldeman's proposal.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Holt, would you call the roll, please?
Before I do, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Haldeman, just for clarification for the record, is your motion to recommend approval with the staff recommended conditions associated in the staff report?
Yes, it is. Thank you for, I'm sorry for that omission, yes, including the condition.
That's okay. Ms. Knoll.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Mr. Pollster.
Aye.
Mr. Haldeman.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Leverens.
Aye.
And Mr. Croft.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries.
Okay. The next case is SUP-20-0014-Z-20-0004, Williamsburg Landing Boatright Circle Amendments. Before we get into that, Mr. Haldeman, I believe you wanted to make a statement at this point?
I do, Mr. Chairman. I have my personal involvement with the landing, and I think it would be advisable and in everybody's best interest if I recuse myself.
Okay. Any objections from the Planning Commission? Thanks a lot, Mr. Haldeman.
Now, I don't, should I just mute myself, or do you want me to actually leave the meeting?
Considering that it's virtual, I have no objections unless legal does with you muting and not participating. Okay, so.
Here we go.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move to the staff presentation for this case. Mr. Wyssong, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to the commission. Mr. Paul Gerhardt of Kaufman and Canoles has applied on behalf of Williamsburg Landing Incorporated to amend the existing proffers and special use permit conditions for a parcel within Williamsburg Landing. The purpose of this application is to allow for an additional four independent living units within two new structures on Boatright Circle. This property is Zoned R5AA multifamily residential in airport approach overlay district, is located within the primary service area, and is designated low-density residential within the adopted comprehensive plan. The low-density residential land use designation includes retirement and care facilities, communities, as a recommended use, provided the criteria within the comprehensive plan is met. This criteria includes complementing the residential character of the surrounding area, having traffic noise and lighting impacts similar to surrounding uses, being generally located near the intersection of a collector road, and providing adequate screening and buffering to protect the character of nearby residential areas. Staff finds this proposal meets all of these criteria. Additionally, the comprehensive plan recommends a gross density range of 1 to 4 units per acre if certain benefits are provided. The subject parcel currently has 28 independent living units with a gross density of 1.77 units per acre. If this proposal were to be approved, the subject parcel would have 32 units and a gross density of 2.03 units per acre. The gross density for the entire Williamsburg Landing development would marginally increase from 3.80 to 3.83 units per acre upon approval. Given the enhanced environmental protections conditioned with this SUP amendment and Williamsburg Landing's overall commitment to open space design, staff finds this proposal to be consistent with the comprehensive plan's recommended density. Finally, staff considered the impacts resulting from this development. This proposal is not projected to generate traffic beyond a typical residential use, nor is lighting or noise a concern. Given Williamsburg Landing is an age-restricted community, no schoolchildren are anticipated to be generated because of this proposal. In order to locate the two new structures within their proposed location on this parcel, a portion of the existing conservation easement acreage will have to be relocated. Staff has included a condition requiring the approval of the deed of exchange and easement plat prior to site plan approval, with the relocated conservation easement acreage being of equal or greater amount than that which is displaced. This aligns with the typical process for conservation easement relocations. The relocated acreage will be required to be on one of the Williamsburg Landing parcels. Overall, staff finds the impacts resulting from this proposal to be mitigated by the proposed conditions. Since the staff report was published, staff has received a number of comments from the public regarding this application, which staff has shared with the Planning Commission as well as the applicant team. In response to this public input, the applicant submitted an additional draft condition for the Planning Commission's consideration, which was provided to you via email this afternoon. This condition, as drafted, would require for supplementary planning within the buffer abutting the southern portion of this parful, parcel, excuse me. Should the commission wish to include this condition, staff recommends that we be directed to continue working with the applicant in the coming weeks to refine the language and ensure its suitability in terms of clarity and enforcement. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed SUP and proffer amendments to the Board of Supervisors, subject to the draft conditions and proffers. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, and the applicant team is with us tonight as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wyssong. Any questions for staff? And I do see, Mr. Pollster.
Mr. Wyssong, if, if I understood the offer by the applicant, would any of the existing open space remain open space? Given the percentages that you gave me earlier, that not all of this was going to be used for the development?
So, if I understand your question correctly, the open space requirement for the R5 district, I believe, is 10% of developable land has to be conserved. And according to the information that the applicant submitted earlier this week that we shared with you via email, they would exceed that requirement by quite a bit. So I believe their intent is only to replace the conserved acreage that has to be displaced in order to permit buildings, but that may be a good follow-up question for the applicant.
Well, before we get to the applicant on that, so that the area that would remain in the open space is the 40-foot area that they agree to supplement? Is that correct?
Oh, I believe the intent of that condition is to provide for supplementary plannings within the perimeter buffer. So the R5 zoning district does require for that perimeter buffer to be in place, and I think their intent is just to increase the plantings where needed. I would have to defer the applicant on how that would affect any platted conservation easements that are there.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Rose?
Yeah, I'm going to ask a question, and I apologize if this is the same question that Mr. Pollster was asking, but focus on the conservation easement. It sounds like if some of it's disrupted, you take that portion, whatever acreage it is, and move it somewhere else. What are the, how much of, what's the current conservation easement size? How much is being, and how much is being disrupted and moved?
So, thank you for the question. Sorry, I was still on mute there. Per the applicant's correspondence, the amount of open space that's currently on the Boatright parcel is about 4.58 acres. And after the units are installed, they intend to have, I believe, it's 3.93 acres as a result of that. So that would be a bit of a decrease based on the buildings being put in.
Okay, so when you say open space, that's, you're referring to the conservation easement?
I believe so, based on what the applicants provided, but again, I would follow up with them shortly.
Mr. Wyssong, just a quick question. Because of the proximity to the aircraft approach flight pattern, was there any special review or consideration of this application as far as the two new buildings, whether there was any potential impact on the flyover route or anything along those lines?
So, no concerns were raised during the review regarding that issue because of the height. However, we did include a condition within the SUP conditions that would require for all prospective residents of the new units to be formally notified that, by the developer, the seller, that the new units are in close proximity to the overlay district.
Okay, all right. But there was no, no, there was no issue with the FAA or anyone like that?
No, no issues were raised, were raised. And I, to be honest, I'm not sure if during the site plan development stage there would need to be a review at that stage, given that the structures are not tall enough, I think, to warrant any concern. But that's certainly something that would be double-checked at the site plan stage.
Okay, all right. Any other questions for staff? All right. We'll move to disclosures, and I'll start that off. I had a conversation with the applicant, Mr. Gerhardt. I wanted some clarification on the landscape buffering, so I have spoken with him. Any other disclosures? At this point, I will open the public hearing and turn it over to Mr. Gerhardt, if you would like to make a statement, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Name's Paul Gerhardt, Kaufman and Canoles, 4800 Courthouse Street, James City County, representing the applicant, Williamsburg Landing. I have also with me virtually Greg Storey, the CEO, President of Williamsburg Landing, Ryan Stevenson with AES, and I think Brad Sykes with Greenwich Tingles on, but I didn't hear his name earlier. Is Brad on?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, great, thank you, Brad. First, I'd like to thank the staff and Mr. Wyssong for their thorough presentation and positive recommendation. I have to say, in this, you know, some very challenging times here, and I can tell you the staff was extraordinarily responsive, and they wanted information from us at different times, and we were upfront about what they needed from us, and I hope we were similarly responsive. But anyway, the applicant has provided a proffer amendment, and has also reviewed the SUP conditions presented by staff, and is in agreement with them. Moving forward, as a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit, under the category of providing housing for older persons, Williamsburg Landing has responsibility to be wise with its funds, yet responsive to the market and successive generations of new residents. They're now faced with a substantial waitlist. But the Markley Road project, which some of you might be familiar with, I think there may be some new members of the commission that might not be as familiar with it. The Markley Road project is a few years away, and will require much in the way of new infrastructure and substantial financing. The boards looked at areas where they can put in place similar-style units, where infrastructure is already set, and there's little disruption to surrounding residents and the environment. By now, I expect all of y'all received the numerous comments of those that are for and against requests. I think Mr. Wyssong mentioned those, and I think has been forwarding them to you. With respect to those for the project, there's a common theme, that they have an understanding that Williamsburg Landing needs to meet the expectations of not only current residents, but beyond that. This is not a situation where Williamsburg Landing is a developer that sells your residence, and then is done with it, and can just move on to the next project. Each and every dwelling unit in Boatright Circle will continue to be owned by Williamsburg Landing, and they need to maintain and improve it over a long span of time. The bottom line is, if they make mistakes, they have to be accountable for them, which leads to some very careful analysis whenever they undertake a project like this. From reading the information from the opposing, those opposing the project, in the comments received by Mr. Storey when he met with, recently, with the residents of Boatright Circle, they seemed primarily, though not necessarily exclusively, concerned about buffer removal, a walking trail, conservation area, easement, easement area questions, and the presence of yard works operation adjacent to Williamsburg Landing to the, I guess it'd be the south. That was a particular concern. They shared a series of pictures of neighboring use with the staff, and I assume those made their way to the commission into your packets. All right, first, with regard to the tree buffer. Although initially the applicant thought that a planted berm would make a better buffer, they listened to the residents and considered that placing of the berm may not work as well or be as acceptable as an enhanced, enhancing the existing buffer. The applicant has now proposed enhancing landscaping with additional trees and shrubs, with the objective being to better shield the back of the neighborhood from the activities along Markley Road and stir up only so much of the properties needed for the building sites and temporary access areas. Bottom line is, applicant's objective is very similar to those opposing for that reason. There's a desire to shield the back of the property from yard works along Markley Road. That operation or its predecessor has been in place for an extended period of time. Not much we can do about it, other than try to mitigate its impact within our own boundaries. And this is just that sort of opportunity. With regard to the conservation area, in 2011, Williamsburg Landing did a substantial inventory of the conservation easement areas throughout its entire campus, which is how they look at it, and the potential areas, potential future areas throughout the campus. And with the county's approval, they moved different easement areas around and sort of establishing a precedent to try to capture some of these areas and adjust them as time goes on. I think Mr. Stevenson may be able to address the total acreage that's now in conservation easement, but I would, I would say it's pretty substantial. He'll, I think, can address that when I'm done. The point being is that Williamsburg Landing intends to work very closely with the county, as is done in the past, to establish any alternatives for areas that they request to be disturbed. With regard to the walking trail, there's a plan to move it slightly, but also to improve it. End result is that it will serve the neighborhood and the other residents as it does now. It's important for Williamsburg Landing to provide a walking trail such as this, so there's no concern about loss or any significant disruption of it. With regard to concerns about disruption from construction, Williamsburg Landing is supposed to create, at not an insignificant cost, individual temporary construction entrances to come in from the rear of the property and not through the neighborhood, and connect directly to each of the building areas. In addition, the applicant has arranged with the contractors not to work on weekends and only work on the site between 8:00 a.m. and 4:30 p.m. each workday. This project is very important to Williamsburg Landing. It's been explored and evaluated in depth by the management of the Landing and its board, two of whom are residents of Williamsburg Landing themselves. As is well put by the staff in their report taken as a whole, this proposal with proposed conditions will maintain Williamsburg Landing's commitment to open space design and enhance environmental protection. We respectfully request your support, and the project team that introduced at the beginning is available to answer any questions. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Mr. Gerhardt. Questions for the applicant from Planning Commissioners? Mr. Polster?
I want to go back to the question that I posed to Mr. Weisong on the proposed applicant suggestion for an SUP condition. The 40-foot area will remain still in a conservation easement?
Ryan, you have the, yeah, go ahead, Ryan, I'm sorry, some of it isn't there, okay. This is Ryan Stevenson with AES, 5248 Old Town Road. Yes, the 40, plus or minus feet of conservation easement along Markley Road will stay intact and be supplemented. The .65 acres of conservation easement that will be disturbed will be where the two buildings are going and that area plus, equal to or greater than that area will be provided elsewhere on the property.
Two follow-on-
There will be some slight disruption, Brian, where the, where the access roads have to come in, which are temporary.
That is correct.
Two follow-on questions and they have to do with the two temporary entrances from Markley. What is your plan then to restore those areas?
Our plan would be to-
We'll work with it.
Okay.
No, go ahead, Ryan.
Our plan would be to re-vegetate beyond the minimum James City County requirements for a revegetation plan.
I guess what I'm concerned about is when you do, I agree with the additional buffering pieces that you were suggesting, but those are some rather large trees in both of those entrances. And on top of it, if I understand it correctly, your property line ends and then the V-dot buffering begins for their easement. And so I'm concerned about the V-dot easement pieces that you're going to impact as well as that current conservation easement. What is your plan for that?
Our plan would be to work-
I think part of that is with, well, Mr. Walter, I believe, owns up to the right-of-way, the gap there. So we'll have to work with him to re-vegetate. I mean, our intention is to, and I think Mr. Store could weigh in if I'm misspeaking, but our intention is to put things back like they were, if you, if you will, and certainly you can't take an 80-year-old tree if there's one in there and put it back, but you can put some fairly robust replantings that we can work with the county about.
I trust the staff and yourself to work that out. I just want to make sure that it's on record that there is an issue between what's in Mr. Waltrip's property and where your fence line begins and the ability to restore that, because those are, that screening that's there on Waltrip's is rather significant in terms of that buffer. So that, that's my comment on that. The last one that, that, I'm just suggesting this for whatever it's worth, that walking path that you're talking about, if you look at the area that is to the east of your parcel that is along Markley Way, which is where that walking path is, that to me is an excellent area where a conservation easement and the protection of that buffering between the airport would be a significant contribution to your neighborhood and the people who walk that path, just as a consideration. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Polster. Any additional questions for the applicant?
I'm sorry, I had one more that I wanted a clarification on. With provisions for limited temporary construction and future maintenance access and necessary utility crossings through the buffer, what are we talking about now?
That's something we can work out with the staff if you need any water, sewer, power, gas access at some point in the future. We always have our eye on, on Mr. Walter's property, frankly, and he knows this, could say it in a, in a public forum, and as you know, we bought a large piece of it for the Markley Road project. So what we didn't want to have happen is to create a problem later and say, no, you can't, you can't connect where it makes reasonable sense to be able to connect without disrupting the buffer. So again, we'll work with landscaping. If the planning department, I think, has a lot of flexibility to essentially tell us, no, that's not an acceptable movement or location. I defer to Mr. Holt and Mr. Kinsman on that point, but we can work out the language if it's too broad. That's not, our intent isn't to create a problem with the buffer.
I, I just try to understand that if you would have to go in there and disturb that conservation easement, again, because of utility, and what you told me was yes.
If, if necessary, but we'll have to work through planning to do that. I mean, I don't think, and we can word it however, that we just get to put a utility anywhere we want coming in through the buffer. And frankly, we look at things like the directional drilling and whatnot as well, so there, there are lots of ways to be able to, to do that without disrupting the buffer.
Thank you. Dr. Rose?
Yes, sir. Yes, thank you. My question is, another question about the conservation easement. So you're, I think you said that it was a pretty small area that you're disturbing and moving it somewhere else. When you move it somewhere else, is it, is it being added to another area of, that would be potentially conservation easement, or is it just a random placement of some trees to make up for this lost area? I guess I'm wondering, kind of down the road, you wouldn't want to chip away at these conservation easements, kind of replacing one large one with a bunch of small ones, and is there a potential that's going to happen?
Ryan, I'll let you- Yeah, I'll take that. Ryan Stevenson here. So we would, the area that we're planning to add, the additional conservation easement, will be adjacent to existing conservation easement already on the property and outside of the RPA buffer as required.
Okay, I'd like to follow up on that, relocated easement, and is that, are there plans to, if there aren't already in that location, trees and some mature plantings that, that it would be landscaped and planted as opposed to just an open green space? Could you clarify that?
The area that we'd be placing that conservation easement would be wooded as it is right now, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any, any other questions for the applicant? All right, and so just to clarify, Mr. Gerhardt, what you're going to do is you're, after the two buildings are constructed, you will plant the disturbed, the disturbed or the bare areas around those buildings, and you are also extending the existing wooded buffer between the, at the south end of the project, between the property line and the back of the residential units there. So there will actually be enhanced buffering to what's already existed.
That, that's my understanding, just confirmation with Ryan and Brad, that that is what's, what's on the mind of the design professionals, but I-
That is correct.
Of course, Greg Store.
Yeah, that is, that is our plan.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? If not, I understand from Mr. Holt that there are some virtual speaker cards this evening, so I will turn it over to Mr. Holt to move through those comments.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. What we would like to do, we've received, as you indicated, three voicemail message recordings for citizen input. We're going to start by playing those, and at the end of those three, Alex is going to pick it up, and we've got some speakers who are on live with us, live and in person this evening, that would like to provide public input as well. And, and once that's concluded, Alex will turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman. And with that, Beth, could you please kick off playing our virtual comments?
Yes, this is Martha Koppenhaver. I'm a resident of, in the Landings in Williamsburg. Yes, this is Martha Koppenhaver. I'm a resident of, in the Landings in Williamsburg of Boatright Circle, and my address is 5630 Boatright Circle. I am calling in regards to the hearing that is to be about the easement for the developers to come in here and build some more apartments. And I am definitely opposed to it for several reasons. One is that it is, we now have a woods protectorship from these so-called quarry people that are next door to us across Macaulay Street, and they are creating a lot of dust and the settlement comes down on us and the trees which they are going to take down for this development do help sift out that silt. And I think it's a block, they block and keep the dust and the noise down. Also, there is a pathway that is very vital for all the walkers that walk the, up and down, which has been very important during this COVID time, from Earl's Court all the way up to the Landing Building, and that pathway will be destroyed, I'm afraid. And that is a very definite artery for walkers and people that enjoy the trees and the woodland aspect of this place. And the third thing I want to make a point is the fact that my feelings about this place is that I enjoy it for its habitat and for the beauty, and that's why I came here and so did others. And what are we doing? We're destroying our own habitat for a development. Anyway, those are my objections. My name is Martha Koppenhaver. I'm a resident of Boatright Circle and the Landings in Williamsburg. Thank you, bye. Yes, this is Martha-
My name is Christine Zuckerberg and I reside at 5632 Boatright Circle in Williamsburg. I live at the Williamsburg Landing and my telephone number is 757-220-9929. This is in response to SUP 20-0014 slash Z-20-0004. I am calling to oppose the construction of four additional units in Boatright Circle at the Landing. Many trees will be removed, which will clear a large exposure to a company called Yard Works. And they move stones around and grind them, and this causes a lot of dust when the operation is in motion. And they start very early in the morning. It is affecting the health of the residents and permanently causing much noise and pollution. I live at, well, I told you where I live, Boatright Circle, and I keep my front door and storm doors both closed and I never open up my windows and yet I have dust coming in and affecting me. I have, for the past year, I have been regularly tested by my allergist and pulmonary specialists, both of whom tell me to avoid dust. The construction will permanently continue, even after, after it's finished, the dust will continue because the trees have been taken down. Again, I am in opposition to SUP 20-0014 slash Z-20-0004. I trust you will kindly take this into consideration and not approve the construction of the four housing units in Boatright Circle. Thank you again. My telephone number is 757-220-9929, and my name is Christine Zuckerberg. It's Z-U-C-K-E-R-B-E-R-G. I have been living at the Landing for five and a half years. Thank you and goodbye. My name is-
Hi, this is John Nicholson at Williamsburg Landing. I am a resident of Boatright Circle, Williamsburg Landing. I'm calling to say that my name was erroneously listed among those objecting to the construction of two new sets of quarters at Boatright Circle here where I live in Williamsburg Landing. I am in favor of the construction of these two new sets of quarters for the reasons given in the excellent briefing by Greg Store, the CEO of Williamsburg Landing. So I want it to be on the record, in the record, that John W. Nicholson and his wife Sophie, who reside at 5628 Boatright Circle, do not object to the construction of these two new sets of quarters starting this year in Boatright Circle. Please confirm this message. My phone number is 540-729-1840. Thank you very much. Have a nice weekend, bye.
Okay, I can take it from there. Our first public comment with us this evening over the phone and live is Mr. Wright, and I'll unmute you in one moment. I'd like to remind you to please state your name and address for the record. You will have five minutes from when you begin speaking. You are able to unmute, Mr. Wright?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay. My name is Tim Wright. I live at 5610 Boatright Circle. Would like to highlight that I am a resident of the Boatright Circle neighborhood. Also, I serve as the president of the Williamsburg Landing Residents Council and as a member of the Board of Directors of Williamsburg Landing. Williamsburg Landing is somewhat unusual in the Virginia life plan in that it has two resident board members, myself and Mr. Bill Kaufman. In both my roles in this matter, I have carefully scrutinized this project and I am strongly supportive of it seeing it happen. It is good for Williamsburg Landing, which in the end owns all the property we are talking about, and the result is that I am convinced that it is also good for the residents of Williamsburg Landing. Yes, some are opposed. Some of that may come from the desire not to see change, a sincere concern for the buffer issue for the adjacent use of yard works operations, and a concern about the temporary interruptions that may come with the construction. I am convinced that the staff has addressed these issues in their planning process. As a resident, I am very comfortable that in the end, this will be a very well-run undertaking with a result that gives us residents a few more friends to meet in four beautiful new residences and a better buffer between us and yard works. I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to address the planning commission regarding this matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to mute you now. We'll move on to our next speaker, Judy Knudsen. You are able to speak and please unmute yourself and remember that to say your name and address at the beginning and you'll have five minutes.
Thank you very much. This is Judy Knudsen. I'm a resident of 5638 Boatright Circle, and I am speaking in favor of the SUP. I have three points I'd like to make, other speakers have made. The first point is that I think the two new buildings, the four new residences, will in fact enhance Boatright Circle as well as the Landing. Second- Second, I am really looking forward to an enhanced buffer. I too have noticed the increased noise, dust and whatnot from Yardworks. And I think having an increased buffer will really help all of us at Boatright Circle. And third, I'd like to point out that Williamsburg Landing has a very close relationship with the Williamsburg Land Conservancy. And the Landing is very conscious of open space and conservation and has been a good member of the Land Conservancy. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. I will put you on mute. Joe, you are our third speaker. You can go ahead and unmute yourself and you are welcome to speak. Remember to say your name and address at the beginning. Joe, just trying to confirm that you're able to unmute yourself now if you'd like to speak. Okay, we will move on to citizen four. You had a 757 phone number. You are able to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. You have five minutes. Okay, it does not look like either are unmuting themselves to speak. And those are all of the public comment speakers that we have live. And I guess I'll turn it back to Mr. Croft.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Baruch. Before I close the public hearing, I do see that Mr. Polster's hand is up and I want to make sure there was, there were no additional questions for the applicant before I do close the public hearing.
All right.
I'm sorry, I don't have anything.
That's okay. I will now close the public hearing and turn to the commission for discussion or emotion Don't be shy. Mr. Polster.
I will make a couple comments and I'll get on with it. But I'm not insensitive at all to the financial plight and the debt problems that the Landing has, having a father that was and a mother that is in an assisted living facility. So I understand that portion of wanting to develop the property to be able to sustain a very vital piece of this community and the services that it offers. I have been very concerned about the open space piece simply because a lot of our citizens say that we are satisfied with what we're doing to preserve and protect the community and the environment and rural areas. But they think we should do more. And here we are given a situation where we are asked to take a piece of conservation easement and put it into a development. I have asked several questions of the applicant and of staff. And I'm very satisfied with what they have come up with in terms of solution. And that solution is that buffering of that forest area between the Yardworks and the Boatright Circle, as well as answering the issue of the trail and relocating that and specifying exactly how much of the woods would be taken off. And then what their mitigation issues were going to be in terms of the areas to access the areas and restore that back. I can't do anything about the wall trip buffer that's there, which I hope stays there. But for the buffering area that does remain, it does hearten me that the Williamsburg Landing are looking at different solutions to protect that conservation area. And I understand that if there's utilities there, there are techniques to do that. The only issue that I have, and that's up to the staff when it comes to the issue of where the relocation is of that set of acres that will be taken away from the county, is that they look at the area to the east and along the Markley area to preserve that walking path area as well as the buffering area between the airport and the rest of the conservation area so that folks will be able to continue to enjoy that walking path. Having said all that, I'm very comfortable about supporting this. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Polster. I spent some time over there this afternoon, walking around the Boatright Circle area and was very impressed with that little community. And I'm going to echo a lot of what Mr. Polster said. To me, one of the, I felt the applicant had extended offers, conditions that would mitigate as much as possible the disruption to the existing conservation easements. And I was encouraged by this afternoon's email in which the applicant expanded on the proper condition and willingness to work with staff in ensuring that the buffering is enhanced as much as possible. The other thing that strikes me is the fact that one of the continuing issues here in James City County is the aging population, frankly. And, you know, we've cited in a number of comprehensive plans, the need for senior housing. And so even though this is just four units in two buildings, I look at it as trying to address a need. I do try to be sensitive to the fact, anytime you have a neighborhood where you've got some residents against it and residents for it, I always, you know, try to listen to both sides. And I think some of the concerns that were submitted earlier by residents have been mitigated by the applicant. For example, the walking trail is not going to be taken up. It's going to be enhanced. It'll just be moved a little bit, but it'll be enhanced. And so for those reasons, I think this is an excellent application and I think it does meet a need in the community. And also, you know, trying to put it in perspective, the fact that this conservation easement relocation does not require board supervisor approval. If it's equal or greater acreage, it could be administratively approved by the Stormwater and Resource Protection Division. So, you know, it makes me, it makes me feel more comfortable in this application and how it's progressing. So I also would be supporting that. Ms. Leverens.
Let me unmute myself here. I agree with both Mr. Polster and Mr. Croft so far. I do want to thank all of the residents and citizens who have come forward and taken the time to write the letters and to record their concerns and also their support. I understand that the walking path disruption will be temporary and perhaps there will be some improvements to the walking path long term. So it does sound like there's going to be some temporary, and it could be a few months, could be a half a year, could be longer than that, a disruption to the peace and quiet that the residents have been accustomed to there at Williamsburg Landing. But I do think that overall, a year, a year and a half from now, it will be improved. The buffer will improve the filtering of the noise and the dust. I do think we need to look far down the road now. And I recognize that those of us getting up in years don't necessarily feel like we've got that kind of a long-term horizon ahead of us. But I do think that this is going to be a positive thing for the, for the community as a whole. And as far as it concerns habitat and open space, one of the things that has concerned me in James City County is the fragmentation of open space. So in a way, we could say that combining the relocation of this conservation easement into another area is an improvement of habitat rather than doing things in a piecemeal way. So for that reason, I will be supporting this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leverens. Any other comments? Anyone else? Mr. Polster?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve SUP 20-0014/ Zoning 020-0004 with the SUP conditions plus the SUP condition that the staff will work out with the applicant that was provided to us this afternoon.
Perfect. Thank you. Mr. Holt, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Knoll.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Mr. Polster. Mr. Haldeman has gone on the record abstaining from this case. Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Leverens.
Aye.
And Mr. Croft.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Planning Commission considerations, and we do not have anything on that item. We now move to the Planning Director's Report. Mr. Holt.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. If you'll give me a moment here and if you will indulge me, I have a comprehensive plan update that I would like to share with you all. Gosh, we've been busy for the last couple of weeks with our most recent public engagement effort and sort of wanted to give you a little bit of a snapshot in time about sort of where we are and then most importantly, next steps. We've got a lot of work coming up for you all as the Planning Commission work group. But again, if you'll indulge me, so I'll start off by saying, you know, from an overall timeline perspective, we are just past the halfway mark in terms of the update process. Looking at the project phase component of that timeline, and that's really what's going to correspond most to the work of the Planning Commission Working Group. We are currently working through Phase Three, which is the Alternatives Futures Phase, which involves taking the scenario modeling results for two possible futures and arriving at a preferred future scenario. Looking at the community engagement component, and that portion of the timeline corresponds most to the work of the Community Participation Team, we are wrapping up Round Two Engagement with the close of our Exploring Our Future Alternatives Assembly questionnaires tonight. It's actually closed tonight, September the 2nd. Both the PC Working Group and the CPT will be hearing about the preliminary results of the Round Two Engagement at your joint meeting, which is currently scheduled for September the 14th. So, you know, a good sort of prompt there to check to make sure you have that date on your calendars. I think we're going to try to get a lot done as part of that meeting. That then will allow us to progress through Phase Three, the remainder of Phase Three, and prepare for the next round of community engagement that will run simultaneously from September to about the end of the year. In addition to selecting a preferred scenario and reviewing preliminary policy recommendations, Planning Commission Working Group, as mentioned, the work's going to start to ramp up here pretty quickly with the start of the review of the comprehensive plan chapters with all of the various technical reports. And along with those, we're going to have a series of briefing papers. You know, a lot of the topics that we covered with you all as a Planning Commission, gosh, if you remember a couple months ago, even we had worked with you all to sort of solidify sort of those big picture items. Gosh, there was really a range. There was this long list that we had talked about and it, there are a bunch of little items and there are a bunch of larger items about some of the very important issues that you all wanted to tackle as part of this comprehensive plan update. And so for some of those larger picture issues, like the idea of watershed planning and looking at more subwatersheds for stormwater or whether it be, say, like public-private partnerships, those are a little bit too big, of course, to cover in a couple of sentences. So we've got a series of briefing papers that are going to be coming to you all shortly that will start to get into all of those details. And of course, we will work with you all to determine next steps from those. Possible new policy directions and actions will start to surface at the meetings this fall and we will take a closer look at land use recommendations and applications. These new policy directions and actions will be shared with the public and again, tested in Round Three Engagement with the public. That's going to be a little bit later this year, probably in the December-January timeframe. As we get into the first of the calendar year, the CPT will be working to analyze the final community engagement results and the PC Working Group will begin finalizing the chapter texts, the GSAs, and the land use recommendations. That's all going to kind of quickly come to some focal points after the calendar year. Again, you'll have all of this fall to begin quickly reviewing those draft elements and those draft chapters. The PC Working Group work will wrap up next spring as we transition to getting the public's and board's input on the draft plan. With all that said, as we look a little bit further out, we are still aiming and are still on the critical path timeline for PC and board adoption next summer. So that's a little bit where we are, big picture. I'm also going to take this opportunity again, I know you're going to have a lot of information and a lot of detail you're getting ready to get as part of the September 14th PC Working Group piece. I'm going to also ask you to pencil in a placeholder date for a, where I think is going to be a joint work session between the Planning Commission and board on October 27th. And the focus of that work session, joint work session, will again be on public input, preferred scenario, policy, and land use recommendations, and starting to begin some of the conversations on the land use application. So again, it's been, you know, material-wise, the work to date has been a lot on getting through these big public engagement pieces. Staff has been behind the scenes, working on all of those workload items and the policy questions you asked us about. And, you know, again, gosh, looking at the calendar, we are already into September and will quickly be into October. So, you know, again, starting with the packet that will go out later this week, you're going to start to, start to get into the substance of quite a bit of all of this. So it's transitioning to a really good time. I know you all are eager to sink your teeth into the substance of that material and the substance of that public input today. And, you know, again, we're working hard behind the scenes to get that delivered to you. And again, can't, can't wait for some of these next steps, so.
Great. Thanks very much, Mr. Holt. I do see a hand up, but let me ask just one quick question. There was a lot of content that you just gave us, timeline. Is there a point paper or anything like that that could be shared with the group at some point just to lay out the timeline so that we have a, just a little something more tangible?
Absolutely. Excellent, excellent follow-up question. And I failed to mention in my voiceover, so all of these, all of these next steps, all of these bullet points, and more importantly, the timeline, and yes, some accompanying timeline graphics. and yes, some accompanying timeline graphics, we are going to have in your packet that's going to get to you this week. And that will be, and a couple of accompanying slides. We're going to have all of that in your packet. Just give us a couple more days. We're making some final tweaks about the when various chapters will be ready. We're trying to get those couple of last items slotted. That's going to come to you this week, and of course, will be a a focus of your discussion on September fourteenth. So you'll 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 sort of get the synopsis of of these bullet points tonight later on, later on this week in writing.
Okay, thanks very much. And I I see Mr. Pollster followed by Mr. Haldeman. Each had a question or a comment. Mr. Pollster?
Paul, I hate to ask this question, given how full your plate and the staff's plate is, but as I recall, there was some discussion over the tourist home piece that the Board and the Planning Commission were going to meet, or is there some other plan?
No, that's in there too, sort of buried in all the the hundred and two details that's going to comprise the work of the PC Working Group. We're also going to have this fall an exercise where we can start to get into those. Again, we are, the Board did adopt their request for the Board to defer considering those cases. So you know, the clock is ticking, and we will absolutely continue to build that into the process.
Mr. Holden?
I already had one of my questions answered, but with the the joint PC Working Group and Board meeting on the twenty-seventh of October, pardon me, do you have a time for that if it happens?
So the work, so just leave that as a placeholder. More details to come.
Okay.
In terms of, yeah, in terms of format, the Board's work sessions traditionally and continue to still start at four PM in the afternoon. Still got a lot of logistics to work through here in the COVID area about how all of that will work, and a lot of that may be dependent on what else is on the agenda for that meeting. So again, we're quickly figuring that out. We know October twenty-seventh is fast approaching. So just bear with us on that and keep that day and time penciled in, and we're going to follow back up with the more more details to come on that one.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Mr. Holt. Appreciate that. That was very helpful. Planning Commission Discussion and Requests. Just a reminder that Board of Supervisor coverage for September is Mr. Pollster, who's already prepared his outline. He's ahead of the game, as always. And does anybody else have any requests or discussion items during this part of the agenda? Mr. Pollster?
I am just boggled with what we have in front of us. And the COVID piece and meeting through Zoom and not being able to communicate in the ways we have by being able to see each other in our body language and having discussions over this issues that we have in front of me bothers me with all the things that we have in front of us. And and so when I look at the email traffic that is going back and forth on on issues that we have in front of us, I I I'm looking for other opportunities besides these scheduled PCWG meetings to have a dialogue or a conversation and not an email conversation, but a conversation in what's being proposed. And and just just for an example, Tim offered something that said we had to look at those land use issues. And and I agree, but I'm looking for a conversation as to, okay, what do you think? What are you talking about, Tim? What do the other folks on the commission have in mind? And I'm looking for something besides the formal meetings that we have scheduled. Does anybody else have the same sort of notions or thoughts?
Well, actually, as far as the Zoom meetings, coincidentally, Paul and I talked most recently this afternoon, and we've this, we've touched on this previously. At some point, you know, most of of our agenda items have been relatively routine. Tonight was, there was an exception, but and of course, the Board of Supervisors has actually met in social distance for all of their meetings. So we have had some preliminary discussions about are there opportunities to, you know, start to return back to normal? We didn't land on anything, but I just wanted the commissioners to be aware that 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 he and I are have been discussing this because there are some some drawbacks to doing this by Zoom. Of course, as far as additional meetings, just as a reminder, you know, in the off-cycle meetings, you run into advertising issues and so on and so forth, which means doesn't mean that we can't have them. It's just that there are some additional hoops to jump through before, you know, there's any side discussions with more than two planning commissioners, just as a reminder. But at any rate, I just wanted to bring you all up to date that we have been doing, having some discussions. Anybody else in regarding to Frank's comments?
Rich, it's Tim, if I can.
Sure.
I very much agree with Frank. I, you know, I I'm very just because of the business I'm in, I'm always cautioning my boards not to get into email exchanges, so it appears like a meeting. So I I don't want us as a as a public body to get into the the email back and forth to and make it appear that, you know, we're having discussions and creating policy in that venue. So I'm sure Mr. Kinsman can opine on that if I'm wrong. But I I do think it would be helpful. There's certainly an opportunity to to do these things in a room. You know, I recognize we have some folks who may not be comfortable with that, and I think if we were to get into just some of these work discussions that Mr. Pollster is referencing, you know, perhaps we could do it with a a visual Zoom and have the ability for for us to share our screens if we want to. You know, and I guess I'm just offering, I would be happy to to put myself in a physical space if that's helpful, and I'm not opposed to doing sort of a hybrid setup, if you will.
Okay. Thanks, Tim. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, just one more solidifying thought on this item before we before we move on. And again, to to continue to hopefully address some of the desires that Mr. Pollster and Mr. O'Connor have expressed. You know, I certainly think as staff, you know, we we could certainly be adaptive to the format that proves to be most productive and fruitful and successful for you all as a planning commission and planning commission working group. So we'll be, as the Chair said, we'll be working a lot with the Chair here shortly to make sure that we've got that good balance. You know, I think I think whether in person or via Zoom, and and certainly to the degree if the commission feels like we need to alter the current format. You know, I think we're at a transition point with the Comprehensive Plan. You know, again, once we start as staff, once we start as staff and the consultant, once we start pushing out draft updates and things that are for you all to review and provide preliminary feedback on, let us know if we're on target, off target. You know, I think the idea that will become very, very important to the success of the Comprehensive Plan Update will be arriving at a format where staff and the consultant can get a sense of consensus from you all as a planning commission on those questions. What needs to be changed? What's what's acceptable in a draft form? What needs more work? You know, sort of the, as as very, as very well said earlier on, the ability for staff and consultant to get that consensus from you all as a group is going to be paramount to us knowing whether or not we've got it right to move on. And certainly, that can best be achieved through a consensus discussion at the time of that meeting so that we know sort of coming out of that meeting, if we have a green light or we need to know specifically the areas that we need to come back on. You know, again, and which is the volume of information that we've got in terms of both chapter updates, technical updates, the briefing papers, how all of that gets translated into the GSAs, how all of that then in turn and including, most importantly, the public input, how that in turn then creates the preferred vision, and then how all that translates into the final chapter text and the future land use map. You know, you can start to see how quickly all of these decisions are going to build on themselves and how important it's going to be for us to, you know, put a nail in what we can, and then we'll keep working on everything else. So I think that's going to be our our key to success on getting that adoption next summer. So you know, we'll continue to have those ideas and certainly those ideas on meeting format with the Chair, because ultimately, your success means our success as staff means success on the comp plan update. So.
Mr. Holt, not to get too far into the weeds, but in the past, when either a board member or a commissioner is not available for a meeting, they call in and it's all telephonic. If we were to to switch some of our meetings, whether it be the PC Working Group or or our regular monthly meeting to in-person in the boardroom, I'm assuming that we have the capability that if there was one or two commissioners who could not attend due to medical issues or what have you, they could, rather than just phoning in, they could Zoom in as well, and we could see them on our monitors and so on. And you don't have to answer that right now, but I'm just thinking that that might be preferable to just strictly a phone-in participation. But I'll just throw that out there to see if if that could add a little bit more of a personal touch to it.
Yeah, you know, I was going to say, conceptually, that that conceptually, that's an idea that as staff, we will certainly follow up on first and foremost with the Attorney's Office. If we do move back to an in-person, it's going to be important for us to remember that we need to have a physical quorum. So we need to have at least five people there. I think with, or at least four people there out of the seven. With the the physical limitations of the size of the dais in the boardroom, I think we could comfortably fit five up there and be socially distanced. Certainly, we have capabilities in the boardroom if all seven wanted to participate physically. We could make those accommodations. It's easy enough to to set up some tables, but then, you know, the idea where a couple of folks may want to join in, yes, let me, we can, let me explore that with County Attorney's Office, and we'll also explore that. You know, we just got such great technology support and such great, amazing capabilities with our video team and crew. Shout out to those gentlemen there who are working behind the camera tonight. I think we've got a lot of options. So let me explore those a little bit with with staff, and we'll we'll get back to you on those.
Okay. Mr. Haldeman?
I, yes, Paul mentioned the need for consensus fairly on to give direction to staff. I I think it's fair to say that we have consensus on our four broad themes on a thirty-thousand-foot perspective. I I think the themes were nature, community character, affordable housing, pardon me, and economic development. And at the September fourteenth meeting coming up, I would kind of hope that we've since, since we've reached consensus on that, we've had the assembly and the opportunity for people to respond ending tonight. I would like to reaffirm or not those four themes.
I think there was a fifth quality of life, Jack.
Okay. I I I think that that would be great. I was doing it from memory, which is risky for me, but yeah, those five, those five themes. And now they're very broad themes, of course, you know, to get into GSAs and and land use changes and so forth and so on is is a big further step, but at least we would have that broad containment of of the further work, and I would think that would be helpful.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pollster?
I I'm less concerned about the follow-on process of coming up with the GSAs and the specific chapters. But I am concerned about some consensus, which is what Jack talked about, about what the important issues are. And so when we meet on the fourteenth of September, what we're going to be confronted with is the model is going to tell us about A and B. I've already heard from the staff as well as the consultant team that whatever comes out of this, it's probably a hybrid that will be the scenario that we end up putting into the GSAs and the chapters and the comp plans. And it's that discussion about the hybrid against the metrics of what's important, which which is what exactly Jack talked about. Does that scenario, hybrid scenario, meet those concerns? Now, we will have invested and gotten the data, but it requires a discussion, and that is what I want to hear from the other commissioners. An opportunity not to hear a presentation about whatever the results were that came out of it. But what's the next step? And what's the discussion about those next steps that may create a hybrid that ends up dictating what those GSAs are and the shape of that land use map? And that's why I'm asking for more of an interplay between us.
Okay, all right. Duly noted. Thanks for your comments. And, you know, on the fourteenth, we certainly will get a little bit further into this and if we need to add additional meetings, discussion, you know, discussion times, we can certainly look into that as as well. So thank you for for sharing that, Frank. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Rich.
Anybody else?
Can we set these meetings up to have video, you know, so that we can see each other?
We we can with a Zoom. We do have that capability. I believe initially, there was a little concern that the video component plus the auto plus the screen might bump some people off with less robust Internet service, but I'm not sure. I I may be wrong on that. But if it, if the commissioners would rather, when we have our monthly meeting or or other meetings, to have the camera feature active, you know, Mr. Holt and Mr. Baruch could certainly put their heads together and let us know if that would be feasible.
I'm like a lot of people. I think I've been on a lot of Zoom meetings lately, and they're they're all video.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have as well, so.
Rich, if I might, it's Tim. I I would add to, especially when you have a case like tonight, I feel that we did an inadequate job of presenting to the community at large the application. So not not anything on Mr. Weisong's part or or his staff report. I just think, you know, Mr. Gerhardt, when he was presenting for the landing, you know, we didn't have the advantage of all the different pieces that we saw emailed over the course of the week. So you know, I think there's a benefit to the to the screen sharing and, you know, encouraging our encouraging our applicants to, to do a little more robust presentation, just for the visual perspective for, for the folks who are watching.
Thanks, Tim. Ms. Leverance?
Yes, I certainly want to support the idea of going visual. I think it also gives the community the advantage of seeing our body language as we're speaking. I would think it adds an extra dimension, plus we can see each other. My concern is whether we can consistently put together a quorum of four, because I know that I will not be able to participate except virtually. And how many others would be in that same situation? So that, that would be tricky. I also want to mention that I'm going to be gone for the next two weeks until the 21st of September, so I'm not going to be able to participate, regretfully participate in the 14th meeting. I'll, I'll send a message out about that.
Okay, thanks, Julie, appreciate that. Anyone else?
Hey, Rich, it's Barbara. Dr. Rose and I need to finish our, our Planning Commission course on the 14th and 15th with VCU, and I don't know how long on the day that's going to go.
Oh, okay, okay.
The last two days are the 14th and 15th.
Of, of this month?
Yes.
Is that confirmed? I haven't seen any information about that.
Can I ask Mr. Holt just to, to take that as an action item for the staff, just to look into, into that, whether, I, I, I don't know that the, the, since they're looking at a joint CPT PC Working Group meeting, I don't know how much flexibility there is, but maybe somebody on Paul's staff could at least touch base with the Planning Commission certification course or, or just see i- if there might be some options. Thank you, Barbara, for bringing that up, because I would hate to lose two out of our seven members for that meeting.
Correct, correct. But if we have any meetings in, in person, I'm always available to come.
Yes, thank you very much.
Me too, I don't mind coming in person.
I as well, yeah, okay. But we've got some, some, some options on the table now and, and thanks to everybody for voicing your, your comments and discussion items, I think this was very helpful. If there's nothing else, what I would look for is a motion to adjourn to our, to 4:00 PM on September 14th, if I can have that motion?
Haldeman moves.
Thank you. All those in favor?
All right.
I.
Opposed? Thank you, everybody, again, I, I think that-